Which one?
The Planning Commission.
We're in the right place.
Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Vice Chair Lo.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade, absent. Commissioner Quilty, absent. Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Self-Folcane.
Here.
And Commissioner Zellmer.
Here.
Thank you.
May I be advised for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll open the meeting for oral communications. Any member of the audience wishing to address the Commission on any item that's within our subject matter and that's not currently on the agenda, if you want to speak on the agenda, I'd wait until that item comes up. Other than that, this is your time if anyone wants to address the Commission. Seeing none, we'll close that. We'll go to the consent calendar. If someone would like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar, just one item, the findings to so we can continue the teleconference of meetings until the governor lifts the state of emergency.
So motion.
I'll make the second.
Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. Next item, we have a public hearing. This is a site development permit, and we'll have a staff report please from whomever.
Good evening Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission. Today, we are going to present a site development permit 2103, which is a consideration of installation of two 960 square feet modular classrooms for St. Hedwig Catholic Church, their school, located at 3591 Orange Wood Avenue. Part of the consideration I want to point out was also in there, we asked for the applicant to do a traffic circulation study, and the reason this was, right now currently they have an existing modular building that was installed in 1993, and at that time, the city staff asked them to do a traffic circulation study, and so we thought we'd be consistent and ask for the same as their, even though the staff reports did state that they're not planning on increasing enrollment, but they're increasing square footage, so we're trying to be proactive and thinking that they might increase it in the future if need be, so we asked them to do a traffic circulation study. We reviewed a traffic circulation study, passed it through our traffic engineer Farhad, and he agreed with the traffic circulation study, and as you can see in one of the CUPs, we've asked them to follow the traffic circulation study to hopefully ease some of the circulation that goes on with pickup and drop off at the school site. But for the details, I'm going to kick it over to Tom.
And the applicant is too on, but he's not here right now. So Rich is here on, from the school, and we'll see if, if you have any questions, they'll probably be able to answer it, so. Let's see, so they proposed to place the two modular classrooms on the school campus near the baseball fields and near the existing modular buildings that they have, in case you've driven past there. The structures would accommodate 50 students and four staff members. The applicant says the project will not add to school enrollment. It'll free up space for the current students and teachers that will be in there between 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. on weekdays. The property is 7.7 acres. This is a very little part of it. The two new modulators, along with the two existing ones, will surround a play area that already exists at the east of the main school in Grassfields, and the project setbacks are just similar to what the modulators are that are there right now. They've been in place without complaint for many years. They'll be placed with pure foundations for support, and according to the municipal code, the development standards are determined through a site development permit for this zone. It's a community facility zone, and so that, you know, if you feel like that needs to be different than it is, you can ask for that. Staff counts 279 parking spaces for the entire St. Hedwig Church and school campus, and the parking has been treated as shared parking all these years. According to the code, private schools require one space per five seats, which we've got to change because that's a ridiculous amount for this. They would need something like 1,000 spaces, so that, that just doesn't work, so we've got to look at that later on this year. The proposed 1,920 square feet of building area would require 11 spaces or 64 spaces if it's one space per 30 square feet, which is the other option. So, let's see, that seems extravagant. Most of the individuals in these buildings are students that are dropped off by parents on the school site, so it's not, they're not people that are driving to the school. When the school was approved in 1993, the applicant did a traffic circulation plan, and that's why we're continuing that, because they are expanding, and that was the way it was done before. The buildings would be 86 feet south of the nearest residential properties. While these buildings are not optimal in design for this location, they are the style that has become customary in the expansion of schools these days. The architectural styles of everything is different, but these modular homes, we're asking them to paint the same colors as what the other modular homes, modular buildings painted the same way. And the public rarely drives down this street. It's really not a place that they'll be seen ever, other than by the school people. There will be no landscape changes because the property has well more than 15% required by code, and based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the draft resolution of approval for site development permit 2103 be approved if you can, so. Back to you.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the meeting to the public right now, if there's anyone wishing to come forward and comment on the project. This is the time to do it. Go ahead. You give your name and...
Yeah, I wasn't here for this tonight, but I'm, my name is Bill Phillips. I'm on the board over at St. Hedwig. We play ball over there and have been for a number of years. I've looked at the plans as a board for St. Hedwig Pony, you know, one of the concerns would be this is going to impact the field and it's going to change things. We've looked it all over, Rick, geez.
Crow.
The President looked through it. Everybody feels like this is a great thing. My kids also go to school at St. Hedwig, and we know that they need a lot more space, so from the CLB, sorry, St. Hedwig Pony perspective, we, we're in favor of this. We like it.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Any questions? Go ahead.
I was wondering, is this, it's not near the baseball field or on the field, it's on the baseball field, right? I mean, isn't it taking space from the baseball field?
No. It's not, not the, not the diamond or anything like that, but maybe partially of the outfield or something? No, not even that? It looks pretty far away.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the baseball field actually in the outfield, the fence paralleled right where the new fencing would be, so it actually doesn't take away from...
Doesn't even affect...
It makes Fenway Park a little bit bigger in left field.
Right.
My, I noticed that, that was my first question was when I read over the report was, wow, how's this going to impact? Then I looked a little deeper in it, and if you look at the, how, where they're positioning it, they're just finishing off a square around a playground area. It's the same, so there's no encroachment that I could see into the field, so I mean, it's a, which if it did, I mean, that's up to them if they want, but, you know, it didn't look like it was going to encroach.
Baseball is way more important than school, as far as I'm concerned.
And they're not driving, right? The kids aren't driving to school, so I'm not worried about the parking.
Okay, I'm good then.
Any other questions or comments? I have, I have a couple. In the CUP, some of the conditions, on page six of the CUP, it's page 23 of 400 if you're looking at the online though. We talk about lighting, and condition eight, it says the applicant shall provide an illuminated address number to be installed on the structure.
That's for the fire department. The fire department needs to be able to find him. If they, if someone says...
Will there be an address for that?
Oh, yes.
For the buildings?
Yeah.
Same address.
Yeah, the same address, but it...
Okay.
We, we, you know, it could be discussed, maybe put ABC on the buildings now that there's so many of them, something like that, but we'll talk about that when we do the, any building permits for it.
And then, in the staff report, on page 14, well, 14 of 400, the staff report's not numbered, so on the staff report, under the heading of Restrooms, Refuse and Recycling, under that paragraph, question regarding the restrooms, or the need for them. I know staff says it doesn't appear that it will be needed, okay, but that may change when plans are submitted. Now, I don't know anything about the requirements, but if you've already got restrooms that are there, that should probably are adequate, I would imagine, for the, the new construction.
Right, that's, that's what they tell me...
I mean, the concern I have is, is an unnecessary burden on a requirement of restrooms for two modular units.
Oh, we're not requiring that.
No, yeah. We're not requiring that, we're just putting that in there because if you look at here, the restrooms are not near the modular building, you have to walk across the driveway, right? So if you're a kindergarten class or anything like that, you have to walk across the driveway to go to the restroom, so it might lead for a future where you want a kindergartner who's five or six wanting to go to a restroom that is closer, that they might be able to put something...
For some reason, I thought it was right next door.
Closer, yeah, so they have to kind of go to the main building for the restrooms. There's not a restroom area near the modular, that's correct.
Right.
All right. Then the other one is the, there's a comment about the trash, the trash dumpsters for the school are 100 feet from the closest point, and you described the pickup, but then we've got a condition in here for them to construct trash enclosures and stuff?
That's, that's, we have to put that in all things where there's construction, just so that if the, the current dumpsters don't meet current code, they, they will bring it up to that code when the plans are given to us. We check all that stuff at that time, when the building plans for placing them.
I think you're aware, Chair, that the state has mandated SB 1383.
Right, right. Curious how...
Yeah, it's gonna...
All right, that's all I have, so if, any other questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I actually have one more question, it's about the, I'm looking over the, the proposed fencing, the iron fence that's going to be going up around it. It looks like it's actually going to take away significantly from the right field on the Mustang field. Have, have you guys looked at that?
I have, yes. And kind of like we do on the Bronco field, it's going to be a raised fence in that area right there.
Okay.
It doesn't eat up much of the outfield, maybe from where your current fences are set, maybe five or 10 feet.
In?
In toward home plate, and we're going to continue on with that high fencing all around this area that would currently have to the Bronco field, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, and then, one, when I, one concern I might have with the iron fencing is safety of the kids, maybe doing it...
Chain link?
Chain link? Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, okay, it just says iron fencing in here, so it says six-foot iron fence, so.
Do you want to come on up to the mic? Yeah, go ahead.
It's actually a chain link fence that's up there, and that's where we're going to, we're going to try to match everything that's already there.
Okay. Yeah, I, that would be it, I mean, I just having a big old, it says six-foot, six-inch iron fence, so I would just be concerned about the iron fence if it's in outfield.
That doesn't sound familiar to me, the iron fence, no.
Okay.
Where's that at? Is that in my staff?
All right. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, we need a roll call on this, or, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Okay. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on. Item B, conditional use permit for Play It Again Sports. We have a staff report on that.
Yes, Chair. This is again, as you mentioned, a CUP, conditional use permit 2203 for secondhand store to be permitted at, secondhand store which is a Play It Again Sports, permitted at 10582 Los Alamitos Boulevard. As you can see, or I just wanted to kind of point out here, that Play It Again Sport has always been in the CLSalamitos, they were over there by our portal, I believe, and Cotella Avenue, but they moved over to the current location right now, and so they are again applying for a CUP. So I think, I'm going to have Tom over here go over the details of it, and then after Tom, I'm going to come back and point out a few of the specifics, but the owner is, the applicant is here and would like to do a presentation. Is it ready?
All right.
Well, let me...
Yeah, let's go, we're going to do the details first, and then we'll have the applicant do after our report, okay? All right.
Okay, so Chair DeBolt and members of the Planning Commission, this is conditional use permit 2203, and it's to allow a secondhand store to be permitted at 10582 Los Alamitos Boulevard in the general commercial zoning district, and it's a move of Play It Again Sports from where they were across town, from there on Cotella, and it was at 4141 Cotella. The applicant is here with us tonight, Bill Phillips, William Phillips, and he's from Play It Again Sports, and it is a chain around the country. He has applied to operate a 3,000 square foot secondhand sporting goods shop located at 10582 and Los Alm, Boulevard, and he is considered a secondhand store because they sell used products. They also purchase used products as well from people that are selling them. The police department has chimed in. They will require that he follow the secondhand store code, which is 5.36 in the code, and so that's also written in the conditions of approval as well. And he says that 85% of the merchandise that they sell is new, and that approximately 15% is used sporting goods, I think that's still the same? Okay. And staff finds that the proposed use does not generate any nuisance conditions and is compatible and harmonious with surrounding uses, and that it will not negatively impact any of the health, welfare and safety of the public. There are four multiple buildings on the property, I mean, excuse me, multiple buildings on the property, there are four businesses in two buildings. The combined uses in the buildings require 42 spaces, and there are 45 spaces that exist on the site. However, the, some of the businesses, because they're low impact, they don't use as many spaces as a future business probably would. So, and unfortunately, it must be noted that the applicant prematurely moved into the proposed location before addressing this need for the CUP. The applicant also has various code enforcement issues recently, such as outdoor sales of merchandise and a storage container in the parking lot that needs to be removed in order to solve his, his code enforcement issues. He has asked if he can apply for a CUP for outdoor sales. It's not actually possible on this site because there is nowhere to do it other than in the parking lot, and we can't make a permanent CUP for using parking spaces for outdoor sales or for outdoor storage, unless, well, outdoor storage is just not allowed in this zone at all. But the outdoor sales is with a CUP, but he would probably need to do a, a parking study in order for that to, to work. So, because we can't make his business work and put other people out of business because they don't have enough parking, so that's, that's the way that works. And he has not removed the, these things at the time of this reporting tonight. Staff has reviewed and researched the surrounding area while I've said all that. Staff recommends approval of a conditional use permit, however, since he doesn't have the code enforcement issues solved, we ask that it be continued till the next meeting and give him the possibility to move the storage container and bring in the, solve this code enforcement issues, basically. So that's our suggestion at this point, and that concludes my report.
Yes, I just want to paraphrase that, you know, again, Tom mentioned that he prematurely moved into this location without applying for a CUP, so our, the city's code enforcement division has been out there several occasion. We reached out to him, again, in person, face-to-face meeting, by letter, and these codes that violation that Tom has mentioned has been, been told to him. And so we proceeded with the CUP process and told him, the applicant, to resolve his code violations, but as of today, they went out this morning to check that these violations have not been corrected. So again, like Tom mentioned here, is we, we recommend, we still open the public hearing and we take testimony, but we want to continue approval on the condition that applicant resolves his code enforcement violations to next month.
Does anybody have a que, I have a question, a couple of questions, comments and a couple of questions, but I'll defer.
I guess mine would be for, for legal. How do we reconcile the fact that CUP versus code enforcement, and what should come first and what should come second, from a legal standpoint?
Yeah, so the, the staff has prepared a resolution in support of the project, but that's contingent upon and assumes that these outstanding code enforcement issues have been resolved. So to the extent the applicant's able to remove the outdoor storage and the outdoor retail sales, both of which are prohibited by the code, staff would be supportive of the CUP for the secondhand dealer retail operation. As drafted this evening, the resolution includes conditions of approval that prohibit outdoor storage and prohibit outdoor sales displays. They also require the applicant to acknowledge and accept the conditions, and so it's, it's a little bit of putting the cart before the horse if we were to approve a CUP with a resolution where we know on day one, we have a property owner who's violating the conditions of approval. So staff's request and recommendation would be that we continue this public hearing to the next regular meeting so that staff can work with the applicant to try to resolve those issues, and then come back and advance the recommendation for approval of the application.
Well, I think, my, my thought, until the code, until the code issue is resolved, I don't see any point in really continuing, only because even if you do approve it and make it conditional, if it doesn't get corrected, I, I, you know, then, then we're, is it a big, is it a bigger, is it a bigger mess if, if we've already approved? It would seem, it would seem to me, a couple of, okay, I don't know the reason that the applicant had started business without the CUP, that could just be ignorance or whatever you're, you know, for, for whatever reason, okay, but if you have an outstanding code violation that, that would seem to me could be rectified fairly quickly, I mean, if it's, if it's storage that's there that should not be there, then go rent storage somewhere and get it offsite and, and solve that issue so that you can move forward. But the bigger issue, which is operating your business, for lack of a better word, illegally, okay, without a CUP, which would seem to me could just be a, you know, force a shutdown of the business until you get one, which I don't, I'm not saying to do that, but I'm just saying that you should probably get, take care of the minor issues before you come up with the bigger issue. And, and we can clear the bigger issue up, but I'd rather just keep the, I'd rather keep that club in reserve until we can get the, what I would look, think of as a minor issues, take the code violations taken care of. I, I don't see any reason to proceed any further until those are done, and give them a timeline to get those done. If it's not done by the next meeting, then just don't proceed any further and proceed on a, on a lack of a CUP. I mean, I...
I just want clarifications.
You know, I, you know, that's just my, you know...
Yeah, we're not asking for approval tonight.
We're asking for a continuance for the next meeting.
Yeah, oh, okay, I thought we were going to try to approve this subject.
They were saying don't approve.
Oh.
Yeah. They were saying continue it to the next one, so that...
Yeah, or, yeah, I just want some clarity, we're asking for that, or, but the applicant did prepare a presentation, would you like the applicant to wait till next month, or would you like for, you know...
It's up to you, I, I just say, wait, let's do it all cleanly.
In light of the fact that, that the applicant's been told by the city in writing and, and face-to-face meetings to correct these, and he hasn't, I don't see any reason even entertaining a presentation tonight until all that's put to bed, and then once that's done and the city's satisfied, then we can come in and, and view anything he wants to show us and, and move on at that point in time.
Yeah, I would just say, however, this has been noticed as a public hearing, so if there's anyone who wishes to provide testimony, including the applicant himself, they should have an opportunity to do that. He may decide that he preferred to do it at the next meeting, or he may choose to present what he had, had intended to present this evening.
And I'd like to say, as this is a public hearing, we've received a couple of letters in support of this, of this business, and it should be placed in the record too.
Okay, so let's have instruct staff to place these, those letters into the record, and then I will open it to the public, for any member of the public that would wish to come and speak to this item, including the applicant, so this is the time. Let's let the applicant go first, and then you can come up, okay?
I appreciate your time tonight, and I'll keep this as short as I possibly can, and I wrote this, I have a tendency to go off script pretty quickly, so I'm going to try to stick to this as much as I can. Play It Again Sports is a national franchise, as Tom mentioned, owned by Windmark Corporation, based in Minneapolis, Minnesota. There's over 300 stores spanning the US and Canada. The brand is able to leverage buying power from top brands in the sporting goods industry such as Rollins, Easton, Body Glove, Nike, Wilson, Louisville Slugger, along with a whole bunch of others. Each store is independently owned, and the average annual sales is over 1 million per store. Each store is unique and generally is a reflection of the community they serve. For example, a store in Denver would be heavily involved in snow sports and say mountain bikes. A store in Tulsa would be heavily involved in hockey. Our store happens to be involved heavily into baseball and other team sports. It's a fact now that the average cost to participate in youth sports has steadily increased over the years, and there's no reason to think that cost won't keep going up. As a result, participating in youth sports is limited to what a family's able to afford, and I think everyone would agree that youth sports are good for kids, so it'd seem reasonable to believe that the more kids playing is better than fewer kids playing. Our mission is to make sports more affordable so that more kids can play, and that's what we've been doing for the last 10 years. It's also a fact that most kids will outgrow their equipment from one year to the next, and the equipment they have outgrown typically is still useful. Our business model is designed to make playing sports more affordable by offering our customers the unique opportunity to trade the equipment they have outgrown for something new, whether it's used for half the price of new, or new at a regular price less their trade credit. It's also worth mentioning the sustainability benefit of recycling used sports equipment rather than adding more to the landfills. And as a reference, we typically sell used equipment for half the original price or less. So for example, if a family were to bring their child's bat from last season, we would offer cash price and a trade price. The cash price offer is actually paid for with a check. Trade value usually is about 30% more than the cash offer, and that's paid for with store credit that can be used immediately or saved for future use. A lot of our customers let their store credit build up and use it for a large purchase, so it's, it's really cool to see someone come in and walk out the door with a $300 bat without having to touch their wallet, and that happens pretty often. In any event, this is something unique to our brand and gives us a competitive advantage over online and big box sellers, which is, you know, tough competition. We use a sophisticated point-of-sale system that is proprietary to our brand and keeps track of the common retail metrics such as inventory cost, age, turns, margin, et cetera. Everything is coded and everything is received into inventory. It's a pretty intricate point-of-sale system. Every purchase... Every purchase or trade from a customer is recorded and stored on our site, on our, in our database and on the corporate headquarters' database. So, all that information is always there. If we buy something from somebody that comes in, it's, it's saved there and it doesn't get lost. We record every single purchase or trade with a driver's license, including physical address, phone number, date of birth, et cetera. And we don't buy or trade with anybody under the age of 18. In addition to over-the-counter retail sales, our store happens to do business with a lot of leagues, booster programs, businesses, cities, and other large organizations. This is something that's changed since the last time we applied for a CUP. For example, we supply field equipment, field maintenance equipment, bases, balls, paint, along with a lot of custom uniforms, custom fanware, banners, caps, flags, field covers, rakes, infield drag mats, fencing, and a lot of other things like that. And all this contributes to the taxes that come back to the city. As a key point here, sales of our used equipment is an important, as Tom noted on, on the website, a very important component to our business, but it averages less than 20% of our total revenue. And that's on a month-by-month, if you look at averages, if you look at, you know, year-to-date, it typically falls below 20%. The shutdown was extremely difficult on us. Not only had we just received over $120,000 of new baseball inventory, we were faced with every league abruptly shutting down a week after opening day for over a year. We had a ton of inventory, but nobody to sell it to. That was a tough time. In addition, we were closed to the public for months. I had no way to cover the overhead, and with a lot of hard work and a lot of creativity, we were able to secure a steady supply of fitness equipment, dumbbells, plates, things like that. And we built an online store and started curbside pickups and delivering to our customers' homes. We did a lot of that for that period of time. It was beyond challenging, and looking back, it probably would have been a lot easier to call it quits, liquidate the store, and find some other line of work. But there's a lot of sweat equity going on in this place, and it's, it's not as easy. It's not as fun and easy as it seems to be. But I wouldn't, wanted to share that with you because I don't think we ever have, and there's, there's a lot of misnomers about what Play It Again Sports is and what we do. And we're not quite the typical store because we do so much with leagues. We do, we, you know, we, we print a lot of uniforms, we print hats. There's a lot of stuff we do outside of the typical Play It Again Sports, and that, that's contributed to a lot of the growth we've experienced over the last eight to 10 years. A little bit about myself, I've lived here in Los Alamos since '98. I have four boys raised with my wife, Deanna. She's actually the one who would get all the credit, not me. We're extremely active in a lot of facets of the community, particularly youth sports, but also with a lot of the schools. We bought the store back in 2010 from a gentleman named Eric Ward, who had owned the store for the previous 10 years. So, we've been a part of the Los Alamos community for over 20 years now. And we've more than quadrupled the sales since buying it. We recently moved to Catella, and it was hard for me to bite my tongue back there. But we moved from Catella when it became real clear that the landlord wanted to repurpose that building and was not going to renew the lease. That, that put us into a pretty tight spot. I've known Todd, the landlord at the building we're currently in, and we had about a year and a half left on the lease. Knowing that it wasn't going to get renewed, I started looking around. Long Beach, Cypress, Los Alamos, nothing in Los Alamos looked like it would fit what we needed. We actually wanted more space than we have right now, but 3,000 square feet was good enough. The fact that it was close to the high school, the fact that it was closer to the center of the city, and the fact that we had about, at that point, probably 14 months left before our lease was going to expire, if I waited, we would not have been able to continue the business in the city of Los Alamos unless we came up with a miracle where something opened up and we were able to get moved in. So, it was, it was a rush situation, and it was kind of a do-or-die. We had to get something done. And knowing that our ratios had changed quite a bit from originally when we, we first moved into the Catella address, you know, we're averaging 30%, give or take, of our total sales being in used equipment. That number, again, has gone down significantly. So, my question, and we probably should have discussed this earlier, but we've had a lot of, a lot of crazy stuff going on the last six months. Reading the, the definition of LAMC 17.74190, I don't want to repeat it all, but, you know, it calls out the percentage, you know, read that part, whereby the sales of such used goods and merchandise comprise 25% or more of total monthly sales volume. So, I know we're not a pawn shop. We don't, we don't do that kind of thing. We don't really fit the definition of a secondhand dealer. So, we're talking a lot about the need for a CUP, and my question is, is there a need for a CUP if we don't qualify as a secondhand dealer because we're below that 25% mark and we don't qualify as a pawn shop? We sell a lot more new than we do used. Used is, to some degree, a bit of a marketing ploy. It, 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 it makes us different than the Dicks of the world and the Amazons and that kind of thing because people can't come in and recycle something they can no longer use, whether it be a surfboard, a bike, whether it be a baseball bat or a glove. But that still comprises less than 25% of our total sales. And that's been ongoing for, I traced it back years. So, my, my question would be, why are we required, or, you know, I want to sound, you know, do we need a CUP based upon the current definition of what a CUP or what, what a secondhand dealer would be? And I, I don't need an answer right now, but I, if there is an answer, I'd like to discuss it, but-
I think that's something that you would talk, deal with the staff and let the staff coordinate with the city attorney and-
Gotcha.
And go from there.
You know, I took a drive today and, you know, keeping, keeping the citations in the back of my mind and circled the city, drove through the mazes of, of all the businesses back here. And, you know, the, the things that I've been cited for, I get. I, I'm not going to dispute whether there's a rule or not a rule, but in that part of this presentation here, took a lot of pictures, and, you know, with, with the first one being the signage, you know, I don't know if there's a special permit or a special application I have to put in, but, you know, we, we had those windows covered, and the reason those windows were covered is because what was existing there was Mylar reflective. It, it looked junky. It didn't look good. And we wanted to put something up, and it was as simple as, well, if something's already here, let's take it down, let's put some up and make it look better than what was there before, and then serve the purpose of keeping the sunlight from, from fading the product, keeping it out of my employees' eyes and making the store look a little more appealing. We took it down. It was, it was a pretty big expense to put it up. I think we lost, you know, that was $3,000. And the only reason I didn't make a big deal out of, you know, trying to find out if this permit is because I'm driving up and down the street and seeing other stores with the same thing. So, I'm just going to assume that it wasn't, wasn't something that needed to be permitted. I know it's not the right thing to do, but when you're, when you're struggling to try to get things done, sometimes you just, you do what you got to do, and I know it's not right all the time. So, the temporary signs and that kind of thing, I mean, driving, we don't need to show it all. I mean, driving through every major center, there are banners hanging everywhere. There's the lottery banner hanging by the pizza place. There's windows that are completely covered. My neighbor, and I'm not doing this to point the finger at anybody. I'm just doing this because when I look around, I see, wow, they've got their windows totally covered up. They've got their windows completely covered with something very similar to what I had. They've got banners hanging and, you know, flaps flying around, and it, it looks junky. I get it. I understand why there's a code for that, and I think it's important. But as I'm driving around doing this, you know, I'm thinking, well, strange. Maybe it's because I'm trying to get a CUP. Do I need a CUP? You know, so those, those things that cross my mind. And the storage container, you know, if I didn't have to use that thing, I wouldn't. I don't want it there. It costs me money. It's, it's a pain. But it's buried in the back corner, and it's not taking up. We've got adequate parking spaces. It's taking up a space that no one can physically park in. If, if that space wasn't parked first thing in the morning, you couldn't get into it because it's, it's a tight back area there. But we get a lot of shipments in throughout the year, and our baseball season's coming up. All that stuff is going to start coming in August. We can't just lop it in the middle of the floor, and we can't drop it off at a storage unit. A, a, you know, semi truck comes in and drops it on a pallet, and usually three or four pallets at a time, so we've got to take that down and put it away and stage it so it can be counted, it can be received, it can be labeled, and then it can be put on the store as, you know, merchandised and make it look nice. We had that container on Catella, and we used it for that. In fact, at one point in time, we had two of them, and, you know, my goal was to get it back down to one. But when inventory comes in like that, there's no place to put it other than shutting down the store and taking a day or two to receive it. And it, it takes a long time to receive it. I could use another 2,000 square feet. That'd be really nice. But, you know, I'm, I'm not doing it to try and break a rule. I'm doing it because there's a, there's a legitimate need for that. The last one is, you know, we, we park bikes in one of the parking spots out front. This has been an ongoing thing, and it's unbelievable how easy it is to predict, but we pull those bikes in and the foot traffic almost is half what it was when they're out there. We, we take up a pretty small amount of space. I, in fact, have an employee who parks his bike there and locks it up to the, the post on it. But that space is also extremely difficult to get into. If you, if you look at the overhead of it and look as you're coming in off Los Alamos Boulevard, to try and get in that space is a three-point turn. It's not an easy, it's not easy to get into. We've got the handicap ramp right there, and then we've got all the other parking spots. And by the way, we have, we have a ton of high school kids' parents that drop off there every single day. We have, and I never agreed to do this with anybody, but we have kids that'll offer us money to park in our, you know, in our back parking spot because it's so close to the school. One of my best friend's sons wanted to pay $100 a month. I said, "No." You know, we, I didn't want to open that door up, but that, that goes on, and that's pretty common. But during school, getting in and school, getting out, moms are driving through there. Todd will tell you, all the other tenants in there will tell you, you know, it gets pretty, gets pretty busy. You know, we work with it, and hopefully it draws in a little more foot traffic. That's, we have to give up a little bit for, but I guess the bottom line is, you know, these things that are citations, I understand. But again, as I drive around town and look, I counted hundreds today, I mean, hundreds, and they're, they're blatant, and, you know, as I look at the container behind Napa Store and, and, you know, all these other places that are retail businesses like ours are, the thought crosses my mind is, why is this an issue here and not there? And that's, that's why I haven't done anything with the citations yet. I, I'd like to have a discussion about it, at least talk to somebody and have a, you know, a reasonable conversation about what we can do about it. Again, if I didn't need to do it, I wouldn't do it. I, I need that container back there. It, it makes a big difference, and I can't have trucks dropping off it, you know, the used store down the street. So, I appreciate the time and I appreciate the opportunity to come and address everybody here. I want to do what's right, and I want to continue doing what we're doing. I think we, we provide a good service to the community, and the fact that we're still there after 20 years, even after the COVID thing, you know, is a testament to the support we get from the community. And I know a lot of letters were sent in from the, the leagues and programs we deal with. We contribute a lot, and we, we try to give back, you know, more than we get. And that's ongoing. I mean, my kids are still young, and I'm going to be involved in all this stuff for a lot of years to come, so that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any kind of question, and I did not come here expecting to get this approved tonight. I just came here with the intent to share some things with you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
All right. I would just make one comment, that our staff, we, we have compliments from many applicants over the years regarding how easy it is to work with the staff and how they help them through the process. I would just say, sit down with Mr. Oliver and Mr. Noda, and they'll try to, you know, they'll work with you, and, and, you know, we hope to see you back.
Gotcha. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity.
One of the points that he raised that I have seen also around town is, you said, "Sales of outside good." Is that everywhere in Los Alamos? Or is it specifically in that zone that you can have outside sales?
It's everywhere in Los Alamos, sir.
So, the pumpkins at Vons shouldn't be out there? The, I mean, I, there's outside sales.
Correct. So, a lot of the organizations, there's a process that you can permit with the city to do outdoor sales.
Okay.
So, a lot of the-
Would that be open to him?
Again, what Tom mentioned in his report was, his location is difficult because the perfect example, as you mentioned, the, the pumpkins at Vons, they're not occupying a parking space. It's in, it's in there, you know, in that little sidewalk area, right? A lot of the other businesses that have been permitted for outdoor sales or outdoor signing, I mean, outdoor sales is, again, do not occupy a parking space. Again, he's asking to, even though he mentioned that it's a very, quote, "difficult" spot to get into.
No, I understand that, but if there was another location, he can, he can see if there's a-
Absolutely. If there's another location, and he can go through the process of obtaining the permit to do so, correct.
And I, I guess one of the questions, because, you know, I noticed the Vons things, too, and 7-Elevens got their water out there, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of that. And I get it. I know it's different. I'm not trying to compare it because it is a parking spot, and theirs is not. But there's other ones that do encroach onto the sidewalk in high-traffic areas that, you know, again, my thought goes, well, that's actually a dangerous place to put things because there's people walking on the street. We're sensitive to the kids walking by our store every day, and, you know, there's, there's differences in each one, but I just, I got to imagine that there's some way to, whether it's a permit to make that not a parking spot.
Without getting too, without getting too far, excuse me, without getting too far afield in the conversation here, there may be ways, when you talk about a walkway, this, you know, we have, there is a process, you know, to come in and, and lay out what you want to do before you do it. And a lot of times, if it can't be handled with the staff, well, sometimes they'll send it on up to us to look it over, and we have, I'm not going to say a lot of discretion, but we do have discretion that we can utilize some time, you know, to, you know, hear, hear the case, deal with maybe the practicality of the site, stuff like that, and then, and then come to some type of a resolution that works for everybody. But it all starts with you, starting with the staff and laying it all out, and then seeing if they can kind of fit it in. What makes it tough is, in, in this case, is that if you, if you get the cart before the horse and you, you know, you're coming in now, you're asking for forgiveness rather than permission, and it's kind of hard to give it when we're looking at the code. And, but I think, I think a lot of it, you can get resolved with the staff, and they're not afraid to bring it up to us if they have. If they can't get it figured out, if they're, they'll bring it up here. And we're not, we're not here to run businesses out or anything like that. If we can make it work, we make it work. I mean, and so, that's what I would say.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Let's get together next week.
No, it's just, is it possible to have a motion to have this continue out farther than 30 days? I just don't think, with how many things he has to get done, that 30 days is going to be sufficient. We're going to find ourselves in a hotspot, possibly, like he suggested, possibly shutting down the business. I would say, continue it out 60 days so that we can all, you know, come together and find a solution. So, I would make a motion to extend it 60 days rather than just 30.
I don't, I don't think it's going to matter really whether it's, if we, if we do 30 and we're not ready, we can, we can postpone it again, possibly. I'm not sure if it's good, it's good for the applicant or not to go 30, to go 60. Might be better for the applicant just to go 30 and then another 30. That's my thought.
We'd like to get this resolved as fast as possible.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, no, I, if there's, if there's, if, you know-
I'd just like more time to get it all. I don't want to see, I want to come back with all the solutions taken care of versus half-done.
Yeah.
Well, Tom and I'll get together next week, and we'll, we'll work through this and do our best. If, if we can't, then I might have to beg for another 30 days, but hopefully that won't happen.
Right, great.
So, thank you. Any other questions I can answer? Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this?
Hi, thank you for hearing me out. My name is Jo Shade. I am with the Los Alam Chamber. I'm also with, on the Board of Directors for the Rossmar Homeowners Association. And I am here just to support Bill and his business. I'm the, one of the ones that wrote one of the letters. So, just wanted to point out a couple of things on Bill and his community service, basically. I'm the school liaison for the community as well as a booster mom at the high school. I know firsthand what he supplies for us at the high school, and I'm the booster mom for dance. You wouldn't think that Play It Again has anything to do with dance, but I'll tell you what, he created a website for us. He supplied all of our dance gear. Nobody else could do that, and he had delivered it. I mean, the parents were like, "Are you kidding me?" He also went out of his way to fill orders and needs and requests and customize and just jumped through every hoop you can imagine to satisfy the kids, really. That's what it came down to. It wasn't about the parents. It's all about the kids because that's what we do it for. Anyway, just wanted to mention that because he is a huge supporter of the community on so many levels. And I just wanted you to, if you can, make exceptions for his unique situation, and please support him. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Saying none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Yeah, let me make a comment. Ms. Shade, we have your letter here, very well-written. I just want to point something out, it may not be obvious, but this isn't about the applicant. I'm sure he's a wonderful man and a community supporter and everything. This is about the property. So it's not specific to him, or his personality, or his generosity, or his participation. It's about the property, so we need to focus on that.
I'll make a motion to continue.
One more comment?
One more, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, just my comment is, is that, you know, in the city, we talk a lot about retail, we talk a lot about wanting retail and so forth, and this is, this is a business that we want in the city. You know what I mean? I'm just, I'm just saying this, I know we have a lot of issues like that, but this is a, this is a business that we want in the city, we want to promote in the city, we want to, you know, foster that environment for this type of business. You know what I mean? So I know we have issues here, and hopefully we can get them all worked out, but I think this is something that we want and encourage for, in, in general. So, just wanted to make that.
Okay. So we had a motion?
Make a motion to continue.
To the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Okay. You have a second?
I'll second.
Second? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Close?
Chair, if I could just add one clarification, just for the record, that will be the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which is scheduled for August 24th.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on. Let's see, now to item C on our agenda. This is a, the recommendation for the adoption of a negative declaration for our update of our housing element. We have a staff report on that, please.
Correct. We did a presentation at a special planning meeting a few weeks back about an updated housing element, and if this is what we're presenting before you, we're asking for any feedback from the commission, and ultimately, hopefully, an approval as we are proceeding to go to council. The August, what is the date? Fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
August 15th meeting. Whether you approve it or disapprove it, we're gonna go ahead and go with, to council August 15th, because, as you are aware, commission, that the RENA numbers are mandated by the state of California, and embedded in the housing element is our suggestions on where to place the housing. We've, the staff has encountered a lot of issues with our housing element, along with our consultant. We've exhausted a lot of different scenarios and contacted a lot of properties in the city. Some properties have acquiesced, and some have vehemently denied or did not agree with us placing housing on their property. So as the revised housing element before you, right now, everyone has agreed with the housing that we have presented to you. And so again, I'm gonna have Tom go over some of the details of the changes that we've made to this current one. But again, I just want to point out that we are gonna go to the August 15th. If the Planning Commission does not approve it, we will detail in the staff report why the Planning Commission did not approve it. And I think I did not mention, the reason why is we are under the deadline to meet our October deadline from the state to adopt a housing element. So that's why we are proceeding with the August 15th, so then we can send it up to the state for their review.
And the situation is also, we may not pass the next inspection of our housing element either. So we're, we're doing the best we can with that. The ones that have dropped out, you may have seen in past housing element drafts that we've given you. The new one, the difference is the LDS Church on Ceritos, and the Civic Center being identified as a place that could be housing, and Laurel Park as well, partially. And so, we're down to that. And that's, that's, it is a very sad situation to have to, to do that, but that's, that's, that is where we're at. And those are the major changes, but once the, the state has it for another 60 days, we may have another laundry list of things that we need to fix as well. So particularly for this draft, that's what you're looking at when you're, you're voting here tonight. So...
This draft is for the sixth cycle, which is an eight-year span.
Yes.
Is that correct, Tom?
Exactly.
So it's from current now to 20, what is it, 29? I just want to point out that a lot can happen from now till 2029. You might have a property owner in the city that might change their mind, that we reached out, and, you know, four years, five years from now, and said, "You know what? Housing is probably a good market for me," and changed their mind. So, so some of the concerns that you might have specifically in regards to city property, converting to housing, or proposing for housing, you know, again, a lot can happen from now till 2029.
Yeah. And the, the number is 769, remind you of that, of places that we have to find available for housing. We, we are, the city is not building the housing. It takes a developer to build housing, we have no money to do that. We just have to identify spaces that can be given our RENA numbers. And by the way, we had way lower RENA numbers before, and we never fulfilled those RENA numbers. So it, it doesn't mean that immediately 769 units will be built in the city, it just means that we're making it available for that. So take that as it may be. You know, apartment rows, what, 60 years old now, and it's, it's still, people find space there, and, you know, it's not completely filled up yet either. So, yeah, so the 769 is not going to be necessarily built tomorrow, so, yeah. And back to you.
All right. Any comments or questions?
On the element as a whole?
Just in gen, regarding the staff report and...
Well, I understand the need to fulfill these RENA numbers and, and the difficulty the city is facing. The one area that I was concerned about is where we're sitting now, the Civic Center, we got, again, I've said this before, we got 60,000 cars going by here every day. We presented outstanding retail opportunity, revenue generating opportunity, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, we have this designated as R4, which is the densest housing you can have. That doesn't make sense to me.
And, and actually, Town Center mixed use is the densest, but...
Oh, right, right, right. But...
Again, sir, the reason why is, you know, and if you recall, in our first housing element, we identified several properties around the city, and the city property was not on there. We've received letters from those property owners saying that they will not convert to the housing.
Right.
And according to the state, we cannot use those properties anymore in our proposal for the, to meet our RENA numbers in our housing element. And so, along with a local realtor here, I want to thank him for helping us, he helped us out a lot, we frantically tried to go out there and start reaching out. He was literally cold-calling property owners, and some of them acquiesced, that's how we got the, the church that's right next to McCullough Middle School, all right? And a lot of them said no. And so, we basically ran out of space. As you know, Los Alamos is only two square miles, we ran out of property, so, you know, what, we had identified the city property. But I, I want to mention, like I said, from here to 2029, a lot of things can happen. And so, you know, if another property owner, five years from now, decided to change their mind and put housing in there, then we might be able to, you know, designate this area to something else at that time.
Is that possible, to change from an R4 designation to a lesser-dense designation, or back to a retail designation?
Correct. If I'm, if, if I'm not mistaken, because we're a charter city, we could change our housing element.
Yeah, they, we could certainly have future general plan amendments and zoning code changes that would shift the land use allocation from residential to retail. There could be some requirements under state law to allocate those units elsewhere, once they've been, you know, noted in our RENA numbers and memorialized in the housing element. But as, as we're hearing here tonight, there could be other residential properties that come online in the future that would facilitate that type of movement within the city.
And my thought was, again, this is R4, the second-densest, my thought was, there's some that are R3 now, that we can make them R4, and, and reduce the need to have this, again, vital, vital frontage as a, as a residential. I know you put a lot of work into it, and it's late in the game, but that's, I just want to get that on the record, because...
Right. No, I think we did. I think some of, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, some of our Town Center mixed use was a different, and then we added more units in there, correct?
Yeah, we, we did for that.
Our consultant took a look at it.
Yeah.
And before this would ever actually be built out or developed as R4, it would require the council, I mean, to agree to sell the property to a developer.
Correct.
At that point, and you're gonna go through that, I mean, I just don't see that happening unless found another home. Did we lose any of the original, who did we lose? The property owners didn't want to...
The largest property that we identified in the original one was where Arrowhead, Arrowhead is currently located.
Right.
Yeah, that was about, was the acreage there, like 14 acres?
Yeah, it was, but they were able to handle probably 300 units there, and when they dropped out, it was 300 units somewhere else.
So if, if the homeowners or their property owners decide that they don't want to, for lack of a better word, participate or allow us to change, or propose, then that, that precludes that property from being, well, I mean, in theory, you could have every, everybody in the city say no, and...
That, that's not necessarily the case. A property owner simply opposed to the zone code change or general plan designation change isn't enough to pull it out of play. The issue we had with Arrowhead is that there were statements made or records produced and submitted to the city showing that they actually were bound by long-term ground leases for industrial uses on the property. So once they showed us that documentation and made the assertion that there was no feasible way that housing could be developed within the next planning phase, we were required to pull it. So because what, the showing you have to make to the state is that you've identified sites that are capable or feasible in terms of producing residential uses. So they provided comments and documentations to our consultant and the city staff that indicated that that site was not feasible and would not be capable of development in the next planning period. But to answer your question, if a homeowner just says, "Hey, I like my densities," that's not enough to pull it out of play.
Okay, so any other comments? I'm of the opinion, we just, let's move this thing forward. I mean, we, how many meetings we've had on this?
Hearing it, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wish to address the commission on this item? Come forward, and you have your name, and...
Good evening. My name is Mamie Wong. So my question, I have concerns with the requirement for density and the number of units. I'm, I'm concerned as, as a resident homeowner about the issue of risk for eminent domain. Really concerned about that, since we have not so many people currently, it seems, who wish to participate in having their properties maybe open to having more density. So in the event that not enough people are interested in participating, even if there is a plan to identify potential units, locations, in different parts of the city, if people are saying no, is there a scenario where, as residents, homeowners, that we would be, anybody would be at risk for having their property somehow be forced out of their hands by eminent domain to meet a, an advancement of city plans because the state is requiring this type of situation? Because I can foresee that as a potential, the logical extension of that, where we're talking about having all of these units, which I understand the state is making these requirements. But if people say no to an extraordinary amount, will it be the next step, that if they don't agree through polite conversation, that they will be compelled to agree by force? I, I don't think that's a small issue. I think that people really want to know that if you have various scenarios, one scenario is there's enough people saying yes, which, great, that will help with planning for sure. But if there's a different scenario, and not enough people are saying yes, and I, I imagine that most people would be feeling quite strongly about property rights, and the risk of property rights being eroded. I think that there should be a discussion about that, because while it is good to follow whatever the state is trying to compel all the cities, it seems, throughout the state to do, the, the, this hard, negative scenario, I think, should be anticipated, that if there aren't enough people saying yes, if the, if the overall answer will be no, and it's a hard no, and regardless of what commission members say, or anyone else making decisions say, they themselves will think, "My property is not in play," however you want to describe it, whatever language, verbiage you want to use, "I want to maintain control of my property and what happens to it." So I think that should really be discussed more fully, because that, that is actually a scenario, it seems like a doomsday scenario, that nobody wants to think that, well, no one wants to participate. How could they not? Well, they can, if they love where they live, and they don't want to change it, they may not. Some do, but not, I, I would imagine some don't. Maybe ask for more participation from the community, maybe poll them, ask them, because I, I would imagine, the people I talk to around my community, they, they tell me so often how much they love where they live. Absolutely love it. They love their homes, they love their neighborhoods as they are. And that's a consideration, I think, that it's not an abstract thing. The decisions, whatever in the end happens, people in the community have to live with that. And the experienced, I guess, conclusion of it, how people really live, it matters because it's going to be many years, whatever results, good or bad, and I think that has to be anticipated. It can't be assumed, I guess, my, my thought is, it's, it's very risky to assume that there's going to be enough people, whatever percentage, whatever target you think you're going to be trying to aim for, so that we're in compliance or something. Imagine the scenario where people will still say no, even if you try to say, "Well, this, this number, let's say that we want 10% of the city," which, I'm just making it up, completely hypothetical, and you say, "Well, we want 10%. That's our goal, is to get 10% of people to say, yes, they want to participate." And then you go around asking. And the number, from the expectation, from the predicted to the observed, the chasm could be huge, where, where it could be, instead of 10%, you actually achieve one. That's, that's a huge wrench in any plan, in any plan, in terms of planning, resource allocation, all of that. So I guess, I'm trying to figure out, there, there are things to do in terms of planning, but I would anticipate that it is very helpful to consider the alternative, that if most people say no, what do you do? And if...
Can I get some clarification? Your statement, I, I take two parts. So I'm gonna address the first part, because you used the first word is imminent domain.
Yeah.
And sometimes that word freaks, like, people out a little bit, right?
Yes, it does.
So the housing element is a planning document, so we're planning on placing the RENA numbers that were given to us. We're not bounded... We're not bounded, you know, to construct these, right? Right? So, so imminent domain to me means that you're going to take someone's property and construct something. We're not, we're not, the city is not constructing anything. We're just planning, right, on putting houses there, right? So a private, let's say, let's say, let's say, I'm going to use a property A out there, right? And we plan on putting 100 homes out there, okay? The only entity that can imminent domain that is the city, right? But we're not constructing anything. A private developer can't go in there and imminent domain someone.
No, I, no, no.
I just want some clarification on that.
No, I do understand that. I do understand that, but it's that, that risk that people are, if it's not imminent domain, it's adjacent, really kind of butting up against it, where they feel pressured to be pushed out of a community. It feels that, kind of the tone that I get, that we want to create a plan for units in future, in case we need to do that, which I understand that we have to think in terms of the long term. But to achieve that, if there are not enough people saying yes, that's what I'm trying to get at. If not enough people say yes to participate, you're saying like 700...
So again, we just have to show the state that we're planning our community for the housing. If 2029 came and a property owner did not want to sell their property to redevelop into any housing, we're not being fined, we're not being held accountable for that. We're only held accountable, correct me if I'm wrong, for the planning of it. So like you said, if someone, if a hard, if a property owner today has a hard no and says, no, I'm not going to sell it to a developer to build houses, that's their, that's their decision, that's nothing with us. We just have to plan and show the state that we're planning to build these homes.
Right, but if, if the plan at some point has to be enacted upon, it can't, I can't imagine just having a plan created and not have some part of it potentially be acted upon. If, if the plan is for 700 plus units, for example, right? And we're coming up with a plan, 700 plus units, we've identified locations and everything.
Nothing in the plan is residential.
If it comes to it in between those years, between now and 2029, the state says, we actually want you to build it. We actually want you to have, out of the 700, we want you to put in 200. But you can't even get 50 people to say yes. That's what I'm saying, is that a lot of this is incremental and just trying to plan for that.
If I, if I may interrupt, I think we've got the gist of where you're coming from.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, because we can't engage in a conversation back and forth, okay? We're prohibited from that because it's not on the agenda. But we've got the gist of what you're talking about. I think that, and we still haven't voted on this yet, so there's going to be a little time for discussion amongst us. And I think we could probably maybe alleviate some of your fears or give, that you've expressed just in that discussion. So maybe if we, if you, if you'd like, I'm not going to, I don't want, I'm not, don't think I'm trying to cut you off, but I think that we've got enough information that it would, we can't engage you back and forth. So what I'd like to do would be to close the public portion and then we'll go ahead and continue on and then we can take what you've said, but we'll, it'll kind of get ferreted out a little bit here in the discussion, I think.
Yeah, that'll be fine. I just wanted to be sure I...
No, I think you've, you've got it.
Went clear about that, so...
Yeah, I think you've...
May I add something?
Okay, I'll let, I'll let, are there any questions of the, go ahead, she's not the applicant, but go ahead and...
Yeah, you were here last meeting and you spoke then, and we encourage you to bring people that you had spoken to in the community with you to help you voice your position. You voiced your position thoroughly and you presented us with a hypothetical. And as chair says, we can't actually engage in a discussion with you, but I think a lot of your protestations should be taken at the state level.
Right.
They're the ones that are mandating these numbers on not just this city, but all the cities in the state. So I understand what you're saying, understand what your hypothetical presents, but this is not the, this is not the level of government to remedy that. I think you need to step it up to the state level if you really want to get...
Representatives.
If you want to be heard and have some kind of action taken on your concerns.
Yeah, but a lot of the day-to-day is local. So, and this is where we are. We're all here.
Okay.
And the reason for that, I mean, I'm not going to fly to Sacramento anytime soon, but I do understand, I understand we can't have, given the time constraints and the structure of the hearing, but I do want to say that there are concerns and there is that 400-page document, which I downloaded, I did see that. And there's a lot of information, which I think is helpful, it's informative, talks about the needs and so forth, but...
Well, and this isn't, if I, let me interrupt you again. And this isn't the end of this document.
No, I...
Our approval today will just allow it to go to the city council where they'll have another discussion.
Right.
And, and you should attend that meeting as well and voice your concerns there. I think that, as Commissioner Sol Focanek said, this is, the, these are state mandates that are coming down on all the cities. And you do, you don't need to fly to Sacramento. You have elected representatives, our assemblyman, our local assembly person here, and state senators, okay, that you can go to their offices and you can express your concern about these unconscionable mandates on the, on the cities that make no sense. I mean, I think, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, these numbers are unrealistic for cities of our size.
No, I agree with you on that.
And, but you're, yeah, you're not going to fly to Sacramento and do anything. You need to talk to your, your local representative here. These are the people that are voting to impose this on us. And then the government, then the governor signs it. So the, and this might be something you want to talk to, you've got elections coming up, you know, talk, talk to those that are either in power or thinking about running for office, see where they stand on stuff like this and see about changing. I mean, the laws are enacted in Sacramento by the assembly and by the state senate and then signed by the governor. And it all starts at the, you're right, it's local, but it's local to the, your state representatives, okay? Are your, are our local, you know, representatives here.
Yeah, I do, I do understand that point, but it's just that whatever is enacted in the end, those scenarios that I described have to be considered. Those, those really are the, regardless of whoever's in power from the top, we're at the bottom, which I understand that, but if...
Well, actually the power is here and it flows upward. You have to, we elect them at this level and they move up and, and they, they go to, our local representative, he's got his office here and then he goes up and goes up to Sacramento to vote on issues like this. And if he knows that, that there are enough residents in his district that are upset over these numbers that are being imposed on their, on their constituents, then they should be voicing that in Sacramento and hopefully there's other like-minded, you know, get enough up there that will change it. Probably not likely right now, but hopefully, hopefully in the future, before all this, like I said, we got till 2029.
Yeah, no.
Get more people up there that, that are thinking your way. That would be the way to do it.
But if, but if things don't and we, that's what I'm trying to say, it's the planning part.
I understand. And, and we're not at that point. Unfortunately, for this evening on this agenda item, all we can do is move this document forward or not. And, and that won't change anything because the state is still, has, has the requirement out there. So, and we can have all the hypotheticals and all the what-ifs, but we can't, we just have to deal with the problems and the situations as they occur and then, and then voice our concerns to our, our state officials so that they, you know, hopefully will carry them forward up to Sacramento and let these, let the other representatives see the error of their way in imposing these numbers on us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so bringing it back to, we have this item before us, I think that, do we want to move it forward? We could...
I'll make a motion to go ahead and move it to the city council, move it forward.
Okay, you have a motion? You have a second?
Second. Somebody do it. Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Any, if I could, I'd like to, regarding eminent domain, just in general, Ron talked about to the city attorney, what's the likelihood of any type of a scenario like that happening where as a result of this, this type of, these RINA numbers?
I'm always hesitant to handicap anything, but I think it's extremely unlikely that the city would ever engage in eminent domain to take single-family housing in order to facilitate private development of high-density residential.
Right. Even in our planning, it's all commercial property. So there's no part of the plan that's part of residential, so.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Do we need a roll call on this or can we? Okay, so all in favor of adopting the negative declaration and for the, our general plan amendment and to move this forward to the city council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, passes. Okay. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate the, appreciate the comment and this will be moving up to the city council, so gather your friends and we can go there. So do we have any reports from the staff, from the community development department?
We have a few. I'll kick it to Tom first.
Yeah, Chevron, quickly getting done. We did talk to them about the fact that some of the parking spaces are aimed right at the building in the back and based on what you may have seen at CVS, that's not always great because someone drives through the wall sometimes. And so we've, they've decided they'll go ahead and put bollards in to, to try to avoid that on the back of the building. There are planters and stuff like that around there, so that, that's, that's one thing.
I like to point out that that's a great, you know, relationship between a private property owner and the city, where the city, because of what happened at another property that Tom mentioned, CVS, where a vehicle went through the, the front of the building, we addressed that concern with the private property and the private property had worked with the city to do that. So again, it's a great relationship between a private property and the city staff. So that's why we wanted to point that out. I have a couple here real quick. As you probably have seen, the overhead arterial signage has been placed on our, the new ones, on our corridor. And so they're brand new to match the ones that we did in phase one and we did the rest of the corridor. Probably in a few weeks, we're doing inventory right now, but the old signage will be available for purchase through the recreation and community services department. So check that out. Again, we're doing inventory right now, but probably in about four or five weeks, we'll probably have it out there for sale. And the second one I want to mention is National Night Out. It will be held at Cottonwood Park on August 2nd. So again, it's come together as a community to talk about safety and talk about the community again. The police department here is leading the way on that and National Night Out, Little Cottonwood Park, August 2nd. Visit the website for more details on that. That is it. Thank you.
Do you have any commissioner reports, Victor?
Question and comment. What's going on in Oak?
On, oh, on Oak?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, OC Sand District, replacing the mains in the street. And they're, they're flying along. It's not the most odorous nice smell, but yep.
And then I have a comment, and again, I know I'm beating a dead horse here, bring it up here, regarding my desire to have this civic center moved and have this revenue-generating strip of land with 60,000 cars going by. And I know this is not going anywhere, but the Navy in the press telegram appears that the Navy is considering selling the property at PCH and Sil Beach Boulevard for development. And I just wonder why we can't persuade them to give us a little chunk of land over on the base for our civic center. But I know the answer, I just thought I'd put that on the record.
Okay. Are they going to have any food trucks or anything for National Night Out, do you know?
I assume they will be, yes.
It's also Taco Tuesday, I just wondered.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, okay, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting and to our next meeting of August 24.